Good evening, it is Tuesday, August 15th, time is 7:09 PM. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. If you'll please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag.
Pledge allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America. Republic, for which it stands.
One nation.
Under government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Third thing tonight, we have Ms. Roundtree, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Burnett?
Present.
Present.
Mr. Camacho?
Mr. Camacho?
I'm present.
I'm present.
Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
Ms. Najoski Egner?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Ayers?
Here.
Mr. Huberman?
Present.
Ms. Revolus?
Here, sorry.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Caides? Ms. McMur?
Present.
Ms. Altman? Mr. Meek? Ms. Shanahan? Mr. Freyer? Mr. Caides? Ms. Altman? Mr. Meek? Ms. Shanahan? Mr. Freyer? We have 10 present mayor.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is public participation. Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council?
Yes, we have Moina Noor.
The record show that Ms. Noor is the current Library Board President.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Rilling. My name is Moina Noor, I reside at 15 Peak Pot Drive. I'm here in my personal capacity as president of the Board of the Directors of the Norwalk Public Library. I respectfully urge you to reconsider final approval of the Norwalk Charter revision as it stands. In reviewing the August 9 Charter revision report, I was surprised to see that the library director was added to the list of other mayoral level executive appointees, section 8.2. This addition was made at the August 3 meeting of the Charter Revision Committee without consultation with the Norwalk Public Library Board. As proposed in this charter, a mayor would have authority over the appointment of the library director. First, this provision conflicts with the Connecticut State Statute governing municipal libraries, which places authority with a board of directors to preserve the independence and importance of this important community institution and gives boards the authority, and I quote, "to appoint a library director." While I have no concerns at all about the current administration's intentions, it is crucial to consider the long-term implications of such a change. Libraries have become increasingly politicized in recent times, and their role as unbiased centers for knowledge and community engagement is paramount. By placing the sole power of appointing the library director in the hands of the mayor, we risk undermining the neutrality and integrity of our libraries, especially in a future scenario where we might have a mayor with a narrower or biased perspective. A note in the redline version of the final drafts suggested hiring by the mayor is per, and I quote, "past practice and custom." The custom, at least for the last library director, of which I was a part, was for the Board of Directors to interview candidates and present three of them to the mayor for consideration. It was a joint endeavor. As far as I know, there is no other municipal library in Connecticut where the mayor hires a library director by themselves. In closing, the relationship between the library board and the mayor on the appointment of a library director needs more discussion, and it should not be included in the charter revision. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Noor. Any further audience participation?
Yes, next we have Alex Knapp.
Okay, would you unmute him?
You are unmuted.
Thank you. Members of the council, Mayor Rilling. I'm here to urge that the council tonight delete the recently added new provision in the Charter Revision Proposal that creates for the first time a charter power for the mayor to solely appoint the library director and by implication exclude the Norwalk Public Library Board from any role in making this important decision. I endorse and support the comments made by Moina Noor, our board chair, and I sent an email statement to all members of the council this morning, so I don't need to go over it verbatim. I want to make clear though that first I'm speaking as a individual resident, not as a member of the library board, though I am a member. And second, I want to emphasize that this issue has nothing to do with the appointment or excellent performance of our current executive director. Our library board, when I served as its president unanimously recommended her appointment to the mayor, and the mayor followed our advice. Rather, the issue before you is really about the priority of protecting the independence of public libraries and the incident library policies for any possible political interference. In my view, this occasion of charter revision ought to be used as an opportunity to strengthen the protection of library independence from outside political bias rather than to undermine it. Again, I'm not going to go through all my statement, but the state statute that authorized Norwalk to set up the library makes clear that appointment of a library director is a power within the library board. The Norwalk co-provision replicates a lot of the state statute, but is not making any reference to the appointment power. And therefore, over the years, this discrepancy has been the subject of a lot of debate. My request is very simple tonight. This was put in at the last minute with no notice or involvement from the library board. In the next two years, you will begin taking up charter revision again. The chances of a new library director being appointed are very minimal. Therefore, there's nothing to be lost by deleting this provision now and use the next two years to review it with the library board and the council and the mayor. And then in two years, take it up after a full debate has been had. Again, there's been no chance that either the mayor will lose an appointment or a new executive director will be appointed. These are, I think, very unlikely occurrences. And so why not take advantage of the fact that you've already scheduled the next charter revision to occur within two years to take up this issue after a full debate rather than having it being slipped in without any debate or the library board's opinion being respected? Just last July, the library board spent an hour and a half discussing this issue. And it was proposed that we delay a board recommendation until after there could be more consultation with the city. So this is an ongoing process, and again, I think delaying it for two years doesn't undermine anyone's opportunities, but does afford us an opportunity for a fuller debate. The reason why boards have a role is to protect the independence of libraries. Mayor Rilling has been very supportive of our library. We have an excellent current executive director. But we're talking about a charter that's going to apply in 10 or 20 years, and we don't know who the personalities will be, what the politics will be like. And already in Connecticut, there have been efforts by elected officials to seek to remove books from the shelves of libraries in Connecticut as well as across the country. So again, I think there's nothing to be gained by rushing into this decision now because there's no imminent decision and everything to be gained by giving us the chance to have a fuller debate with the involvement of the library board and the council. And I urge you therefore to do what you have the authority tonight to do, which is simply to delete the provision dealing with the mayoral appointment of the library director. And again, I have a written statement that I had circulated to all of you by email, and I be glad to answer any questions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mayor Knapp. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council?
If there's anyone else that wishes to speak, please raise your hand electronically.
Seeing none, I will close public participation. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it relates to item four on the special agenda, I would like to move to divide the question, item four, into three parts. And I'd like to share an explanation as to why. The first part of the question would be first to consider item four dot A, which is the action on the final report of the Charter Revision Commission dated August 9, 2023. The second section would be to consider item four dot B. If we adopt item four A, which is the action on the ballot question. And the third item would be to consider items four dot C through F collectively if we adopt item A and B. The explanation is pretty straightforward in that the resolution is a multi-part resolution. Each section, which is capable of standing as a complete proposal without the others. On the other hand, it makes sense for us to proceed first with voting on item four A before we proceed to the the ballot question, simply because if for whatever reason, item four A is not passed, there's no basis to proceed further. The information that you have before you provides the specific question that would go on the ballot for discussion, and I think it's important to allow council members an opportunity to express any concerns or amendments to the ballot question. So that's why we would separate it. So again, if we approve item four A and four B, then we would be positioned to, in its entirety, look at items C through F and address those items in total. So that is the motion, again, to separate the item four into three sections, starting with item four dot A, and then moving to four dot B, and then item four dot C through F.
Now, in this situation, I am compelled to require a second. The item would not be debatable, however, clarifying questions may be answered. So if I have a second to the motion made by the council president.
I'll second that.
Ms. Najoski Egner? All in favor? Any questions? I'm sorry.
Yes, well, so this is specifically having to do with how we're going to proceed.
Yes. Any further questions? All in favor? Let's call for a roll call vote, please. Ms. Roundtree, would you please have a roll call vote so we can make sure we get this right?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Mr. Camacho?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Najoski Egner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Huberman?
Aye.
Ms. Revolus? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Caides? Ms. McMur?
Yes.
Ms. Altman? Mr. Meek? Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Freyer? And Ms. Revolus?
She's here. She might not realize she's muted.
Someone should text her maybe.
I'm sorry.
So, and the count is, Ms. Roundtree?
11, yes.
Pardon me?
Ms. Revolus needs to vote.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, sorry, yes.
So.
Aye.
And please let the record reflect that at 7:14, Ms. Shanahan also arrived and is present. So the motion passes 11 to nothing. Thank you, Mr. President, I believe you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we move to item four dot A, we have received information correspondence as relates to the library director role section 8 dot 2. There was commentary made during public participation. And at this point, I would like to move that we remove that section at this point in the charter and address it during the upcoming charter revisions that will continue beyond this point. So to provide clarity, the motion is to remove section 8 dot 2.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. I believe I would probably have to call for a second on this item as well.
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Ayers. Any comments or questions? Ms. Najoski Egner?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so two questions. One is that this item was added under as recommendation 16, which also added the Director of Recreations and Parks. So are we proposing to strike both additions? And can we separate that? Because I thought we had to vote on each recommendation separately.
Thank you for the question. I'd like to refer to our legal counsel, Mr. Attorney Steve Mednick, to provide clarity on the specific item that addresses the library director role.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair. I think the first question I had to do with what you can do under the charter revision this evening. And what you can do under the charter revision under 7-191D is you can approve the proposed charter amendments, or you can reject the same or separate provision. So the way I normally reference that is that you can vote it up or down, in whole or in part. And so I think the item that you've just raised, if I understand it, and I just want to make sure you get the the number correctly, is you are moving at this moment, if I may, Mr. President, to to eliminate the library director from the list. Is that what you're trying to do?
That is correct.
So that would be 8-2A3M.
Okay.
Precisely. You're going a little broad with 8 dash. You were going to take a whole section of the charter out.
Right, 8 dot 2 dot.
And that would be permissible. That is a separate and distinct item that you would be rejecting. So it would be motion to reject that provision and eliminate that provision from the charter, and that would be appropriate. Did you want me to address the legal issues involving that? You're moving to?
Yes, that would be helpful.
So the legal issues are distinct from the policy reasons. I think the president of the board and the mayor, former mayor, laid out some policy reasons why you should take the action that you seem to be taking. But from a legal perspective, I just want to point out that the statute that has been cited is not controlling over the charter. Under the charter, under Home Rule, under the municipal powers portion of the Home Rule Act, you have the ability to establish a library board and with whatever powers that you'd like to have in that library board. The statute they cite, the state statute, they cite title, under Title 11 is a statute that you might use if the council, without any guidance from its charter, wanted to create a library board independent of its charter. So that if you have your library board mandated by the charter, they can look at Title 11 for guidance on that board and on creating the board. The other thing I want to point out is that was stated that the power was for the mayor to appoint. That is true to an extent. It's also for the council to confirm. And so it's not a sole mayoral authority, it's a shared authority of advice and consent for the library board, the library board, the library director. Likewise, in terms of the independence of the body, the library board is subject to the same appointment authority. The mayor appoints the library board subject to your confirmation. And so there are checks and balances, and so that was the intention of the commission, was to establish those checks and balances. From policy perspect-- I have no position on the policy perspective of delaying the consideration for a couple of years, but you are permitted to eliminate that provision if you want.
Mr. Camacho?
Yeah, just a question about, let's assume for the sake of argument that we vote to keep that provision in. Is, would that preclude the common council from creating an ordinance that would establish the procedure by which the board, the library board and the city might work together to pick a library director?
Adopting what has been the most recent policy would not violate the charter if you had the provision, retain the provision in the charter of appointment and confirmation, establishing a protocol for how the how the name of a candidate is submitted to the mayor would not violate that provision. The charter would be appropriate.
Ms. Najoski Egner?
Thank you. And just to confirm, if we do not include the librarian in the charter, the council does not have any role or authority in confirming the appointment of the librarian?
Under the current structure in town, one of the hard things about this section, you can talk to just the the leadership around the table, is there is nothing that governs the appointment of the library director. It's not governed by the ordinance that has been cited. The statutory provision is discretionary. You can argue whether it's discretionary as to whether to even hire a director, although it seems unfathomable that you have a major municipal department without an executive director or department head. And so even the statute is discretionary with regard to the library board that you may create, that you have the authority to create. You don't have to use all the elements of that statute. But right now, you have no guidance, and the reason that the commission added that language was to make it clear that there is a process, and it's consistent with all the other departments. So without the language, you would be operating by folklore, basically, in terms of just what your customs and traditions have been, and try to find a way to go forward. The mayor in the past few years has appointed somebody with the help of the library board, but there's nothing that says that that is the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comment or discussion?
I'd actually like to make a comment. Yeah, so, you know, I understand Mr. Burnett's motion, and I don't feel strongly about this point. Certainly not anything that I think we need to upset the apple cart on, but I do think that this provision was added precisely so that the council would have a voice in this appointment of this incredibly crucial position. I think, you know, I actually believe I may have been one of the people who mentioned adding this position to the list because I do think that it's valuable for the council to have confirmation authority over such a position. So I do think that that's an important consideration here. I also, in general, I'm not comfortable with the idea of an absence of clarity as to how we do something. So, you know, again, given the tremendous quality of the current director, who I hope will be serving for many years, I don't feel strongly about waiting for it for two years, but I do, I just think it's important to really highlight that there's actually a very particular reason why this would be a valuable addition to have the librarian be on the same footing as the other leaders of the various departments and to have the council have a role in that appointment.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. Huberman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have reservations of removing this because the task that we set out to do with the council revision or charter revision was to codify, was to bring clarity into a lot of the systems that exist within this document and making this document a part of our governing that is in the 21st century. And I think it's important that this particular department is a part of the city and that the head of that department is reviewable by the council and that the council has a say in that process. And for me, I feel that waiting two years is again kicking the can down the road, which is something that I think we are here because we don't want to continue to do that. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Ms. Ayers?
I am now, I walked into the chambers very sure about how I felt about this position. Now hearing from the legal person, I have questions and I have more concerns. I think my top question is, the director of the library, not talking about who currently there, just talking about the position. The director of the library is a city employee. They are paid and they are overseen to a certain extent by the city. And even though state statute allows us to create a library board and they have certain identified, a certain identified role, we are talking about a city employee that should have the same processes as every other city employee. I think as a city, we hold ourselves, or we allow ourselves to be liable and we cause other issues when we begin to make caveats for a particular position. Again, not talking about the person, talking about the position. And so I hear the representation from the library board, but my overarching question, if we wait for this to go to ordinance, which could take however long that committee to go through this process, it can still be another two years. It's not an instantaneous thing. So just if we send it to ordinance, it's not like in three months, it could happen, but all of a sudden, we have this clarity. So without this clarity, how are we supposed to move forward? So those are my questions that allow them to be uneasy with going forward and not having this provision.
Further discussion or questions?
I have a comment.
Mr. Camacho?
Yeah, so, you know, it's important that the ordinance provides that the director, that the library director is appointed with the consent of the city council. So we're talking about with the consent of a majority of 15 members of the city council. And so it's not solely within the discretion or the power of the mayor to appoint the library director. I understand that the board might feel put off that they were not consulted with respect to this provision that may have, that was unfortunate perhaps, but it seems to me that there is a lack of clarity at this point. I believe that Ms. Harris will be there for a very long time. But anything is possible, and I think that continuing with that lack of clarity is not in the best interest of the city. And I also think that because by ordinance, we could adopt the procedure that I think was used this last time around to pick Ms. Harris as the director of the library. I think that the concerns of the board can be met or addressed in the form of inordinance in the next year or two. Or for that matter, in two years down the road, if the if the new charter commission elects to make changes to this provision in addition to any others, that, you know, whatever problems that or concerns that people might have by having it in there now can be addressed at that time. I think the overarching concern is that there is a lack of clarity. And because of that, I intend to vote that that provision, I intend to vote no in motion that the provision be eliminated.
Further comment or discussion, Mr. Goldstein?
I I really appreciate my colleagues' comments tonight. And I think that particularly. Um, and I think that particularly, um, a lot of the questions raised by Ms. Harris and, uh, Mr. Camacho have been valuable. One of the things that I was thinking about, I think there are many of us who have actually served on a border commission before we've been on the council. And I can think of another situation where a border commission votes for the director of a municipal department. Um, that seems almost counter to almost how we appoint a director of any other senior level municipal position, um, in the city. I, I do believe in the, that there should be a level of oversight, but the other thing that I think as we build in here, and David can tell me if I'm wrong about this, is that we do get to relook at the charter every five, I think, instead of ten. Do it with an additional first two years. So if we're wrong, this is something that we can fix, but I do think that providing clarity in this moment. Um, I think that argument, for me personally, I think that argument, um, so I will also be voting no. Um, and keeping the provision as.
Further discussion?
I have a question. I'm so. So if we decide to keep the provision as it is, how does that affect other department heads?
Doesn't.
It doesn't affect, this is only isolated to this. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? This is the Joski Eckner.
And just to provide clarity, um, Ms. Harris, that would mean that this position was appointed in the same way that all the other department heads are appointed.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I, uh, just, I guess for clarity, I made the initial motion which was seconded and in that motion I stated section eight dot two. Um, I, I, I don't know if we have a parliamentarian, but I, I think it would be appropriate for me to amend my motion to properly state section eight dot two dot A dot three dot M as the actual section for consideration to be removed.
That was going to be my next, uh, next action. You had two choices at that point to amend or to withdraw. So you wish.
I'm making, uh, a, a motion to amend my initial motion to state section, to update it to state section eight dot two dot A dot three dot M as the section for consideration to be removed.
Okay, so now we vote on the amendment and then we vote on the item.
Right.
Okay. So, uh, unless there are further discussion, Ms. Roundtree, if you will please take a roll call vote.
And we need a second to.
Oh, yes, we need a second. Sorry. Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second that, uh, mayor. So just to be clear, so if we vote yes. We're voting.
Yes, right. Yeah, voting yes right now means you are voting for that the amendment, the, uh, motion is amended. And then the next vote you take is on the motion as amended. Yep. Yes. Okay. So let's give that a try. Okay, um, Ms. Roundtree, if you'll please take a roll call vote.
Mr. Burnett?
Yeah, eh, yes.
Mr. Camacho?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Nadjelski-Eichner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Hugman?
I.
Ms. Revolus?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. McMur?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
That's eleven yes.
The motion to amend passes eleven to one. Uh, are there any more, is there any more discussion on the amendment as, as the motion as amended?
I think that was in the motion, just to be clear.
Eleven to none.
Sorry, the motion as amended would be to remove that item from the proposed charter revision, which means that the, the mayoral appointment of the library director, uh, and council approval would be removed uh, at this time. Any, Mr. Burnett?
Just to provide further clarity, because I think council member, Doleen Young, was asking the question.
Oh.
A, a, a yes vote means the item is removed from the charter and we continue as we are currently.
That, that is correct. A yes vote, you're voting to have the amendment, to approve the amendment, to remove the item from the charter. A no vote means you're not voting to approve the motion to have.
It removed. We want it to remain as presented.
Now, are there any other comments or discussion before we move forward? Uh, Ms. McMur?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, so my question is, if we vote for the amendment to remove this provision, what action will be taken if, for whatever reason, we need a new director of the library in the interim?
I would envision, and again, it's not clear, um, this past, uh, time that we selected, elected a director, we worked very closely with the library board, uh, had them interview candidates and then put three names forward to the mayor. Uh, the mayor then looked at, I looked at the, the names, picked the current director um, and that director was appointed.
So I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you, mayor. I appreciate that clarity. I, I hear everybody who's spoken tonight. I, I heard and read the emails that came in this afternoon and I just don't, I feel uneasy about unclarity. Um, I think a lot of people have spoken about this and I just want to say that I, I think the whole purpose of us doing this was to be clearer about how we govern and make this, um, document clearer and, um, easier to read. And so by taking this provision out, I feel like we are not doing that. We are making it unclear. And so that makes me very, um, concerned. So I will also be voting no on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMur. Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Roundtree, would you please take a roll call vote on the motion as amended?
Yes, mayor. Mr. Burnett?
I.
Mr. Camacho?
No.
Mr. Goldstein?
No.
Ms. Nadjelski-Eichner?
No.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Ayers?
No.
Mr. Hugman?
Nay.
Ms. Revolus?
Uh huh.
Ms. Young?
No.
Ms. McMur?
No.
Ms. Shanahan?
No.
That's one yes and ten nay.
And the motion fails. So we can now go back to council president or the items as separated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move item four dot A to, which is to approve the final report of the Charter Revision Commission dated August ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Burnett has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Camacho seconds. Discussion or comment? Mr. Hugman?
I, I have a, a question that I believe is going to be directed towards Mr. Mednick and it has to do with also item B. Item B states ten years for the cadence of revising the, uh, looking forward every ten years, yet in eleven four A, it says five years, and I believe it says in your memo, five years. Okay. Well, I, I was concerned because the resolution that we're voting on. All right, when we get to be, we can fix that. All right, thank you. That was my only question.
Any further comment or discussion? This is Nidjelski-Eichner?
I just very briefly want to, um, again, express my, um, incredible appreciation for the incredibly detailed work that's been done here. Um, I appreciated very much that the Charter Revision Commission took us so very seriously and went so far as to, um, uh, disagree with a few of our errata and, and changes. Um, and I think that that, um, is really terrific and really reflects the, the level of dedication and work here. Um, so I am very pleased with where this, um, all settled out. Um, and, um, really looking forward to being able to support, uh, such a, I think, really vastly improved document.
Thank you. Further comment or discussion?
Mr. Hugman? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would like to second, uh, what my colleague, uh, Ms. Nidjelski-Eichner just said. Uh, and thank you all, the commission, you, uh, attorney Mednick, um, and everyone on the council for the work that you have all put into this. I mean, this has been something that we have all talked about during our time serving on the council and looking at the, at the charter and I'm glad to see that this day has come, that we're at a place where we are codifying this language, we are updating this language, we are making it into a readable living document for the city and I'm proud of that fact and looking forward to voting yes to move this forward.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ms. McMur?
I believe Ms. Smith was ahead of me, so I'll defer to her. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, thank the Charter Revision Commission for your extraordinary work, um, all the detail um, that you, I, I, I mean, just you worked so hard on this. So, so I really appreciate how seriously you took it. Patsy, thank you so much for your leadership. Um, Attorney Mednick, uh, your guidance has been extraordinary. Um, I would also, uh, like to take a moment to, uh, acknowledge our former, uh, council member, Tom Livingston, for, um, organizing, you know, being behind this, uh, Charter Revision Commission. Um, as, um, council member Hugman just, uh, mentioned, we have been talking about this for years. Um, and with the efficiency study showing that it was something we needed to do, uh, Mr. Livingston really took the bull by the horns and got this going, uh, turning it over to President Burnett, who, uh, your leadership has been extraordinary. And I also just have to thank Councilmember Nidjelski-Eichner because you have done extraordinary work. So thank you so much for, uh, your, your attention to detail and, uh, helping get us through this.
Further discussion, Ms. McMur?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I just want to say thank you, of course, but I also want to congratulate, um, the Charter Revision Commission. You guys are one step closer to the finish line and that's got to be a huge, wonderful feeling for you all. And I just want to say thank you and I know it's a lot of time and effort that goes into this and I really appreciate everything you've done and congratulations, you're almost there.
Further discussion? Mr. Goldstein?
There've been a lot of thank yous and they're all well deserved and I echo all of them, but I just want to say, well, the reason I want to thank the Charter Revision Commission is because you met the mandate and you really, um, you went above and beyond. This is a lasting, um, act of service and it's now our job to explain this, you know, to residents across Norwalk and, and, and encourage that they support this because this is, um, a vast improvement um, from the disheveled and disorganized, uh, charter that, uh, we are currently governed on. And, um, I, I am looking forward and will vigorously, um, uh, encourage all of our residents to vote in support of this charter, uh, on, at the, uh, this, uh, this November.
You. Further discussion? Uh, Ms. Young?
Thank you, mayor. So I, I, I think the one time I said to you, this has never been done before, and I think we've all said that, that Norwalk in twenty twenty-three is taking its first real look at the body that governs how we govern our city. And, and, and I almost said that's embarrassing. But I think under your leadership, mayor, I appreciate you hearing us and understanding that and making sure that we moved in this direction. Um, because it, to say it was long overdue just doesn't even make sense. Um, I want to echo specifically what, uh, Barbara Smith mentioned. Um, and thank Tom Livingston for his leadership, um, while he was on the council. Um, but also, you know, I want to really say thank you to Nora, um, and all the other lawyers and everybody on the council who really took this seriously and, and contributed to this process. And, and lastly, really to, um, the Charter Revision Commission, who thought, who would have thought that you've got ten more years of this, all of you? Um, that's a joke. Um, but it, it shows the real commitment, um, from residents, from folks that live here and want to see Norwalk grow and do better and govern better. And so this was the first step in this process and I'm just really, um, thankful to be a part of it. And I really want to say to the, to the new, uh, council folks, you did a awesome job with this process. Um, you jumped in right away and, 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 and that shows your dedication to what you're doing for the residents of, of, for the city of Norwalk. And thank you to Greg, lastly, for his leadership, um, with this process. And I had an opportunity to just, I bumped into Mr. Ned, Mednick, um, a couple of days ago at City Hall and, and I said to him, thank you for making it easy to understand. And so I think that that's how you include people in this process, make people not afraid to be a part of this process, particularly when we look to get more folks involved um, at the Charter Commission, uh, committee level. So I appreciate that, um, with you also, Mr. Mednick. And I'm done. Thank you.
You. Further discussion? Before we call for the vote, uh, because I don't see any other hands, uh, I want to say this is a remarkable moment for the city of Norwalk. What's even more remarkable to me is that the charter remained in its current situation for, since nineteen thirteen. Uh, and I thank Mr. Mednick for bringing his wisdom and experience to the process. I don't think it could have been, it, it couldn't have done it seamlessly, uh, i- if you weren't part of this process, giving guidance throughout the whole process, being available to anybody who called you. Certainly the hard work of the Charter Revision Commission, people who don't get paid for what they do. They volunteered because of their concern for the city and because of their concern for how we govern. And to the council who also saw this process through, tremendous, tremendous effort. Uh, Nora, you're right on top of everything, Mr. Nidjelski-Eichner, I'm sorry, you're right on top of everything, asking questions, uh, questions that needed to be asked. Uh, I go back a long way in the city. And in nineteen seventy-five, the first woman mayor and since the last was elected as mayor of the city. Her name was Jenny Cape. She was famous for her hats and she had a wisdom that, uh, she often displayed. And one thing I remember her saying, and she said, if you want to know how to run this city, read the charter. Well, I sat out at that time. I was probably a sergeant and I started looking to say, you can't read the charter in its current positions because it jumps from person, this, there's mirror assignment, uh, mirror responsibilities here and over here and over here and over there in the council the same way. So this is going to make the charter easy to read and I think we're setting the tone. We're setting, we're, we're making the road less bumpy for those who come after us. People who will be able to sit down, understand the charter, read it, really digest what it says and help them in their governance of the city. So again, I know there's plenty of accolades to go around, uh, and, uh, uh, I, I think that a lot of that's been said tonight. So, uh, again, um, I think I'll call for a roll call vote from Ms. Roundtree?
Mr. Burnett?
I.
Mr. Camacho?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Nadjelski-Eichner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Hugman?
I.
Ms. Revolus?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. McMur?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Eleven yes, mayor.
Motion passes eleven to nothing. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to item number four dot B, I'd like to move that the following question will be paced on the ballot for referendum to be held on the general election of November seventh, twenty twenty-three, which reads as follows. Shall the charter be revised to clarify and streamline government operations and standards? Maintain a two-year mayoral and council term. Expand the police and fire commissions from two to four members. Establish procedures to enhance public participation in the budget process and require charter review every five years with an initial review in two years.
The motion has been made. Do I have a second? Uh, this, Mr. Hugman, this your. This, Mr. Huberman, it's your turn. Is there any discussion or comment?
I'm sorry, just as a point of procedure, I realize that Mr. Burnett read saying every five years. I'm assuming he doesn't have to like amend what's on the agenda here, or we have to go through motions here.
Mr. Mednick, do.
I don't know.
Appears on the agenda is ten.
I would agree. I just wanted to ask, I want to ask someone who knows more about this procedural legal stuff. Just want to make sure we're all.
So we're okay or should we?
Because the written agenda says something different than what you just read, do we need to take a vote to amend?
To amend the agenda? Yeah. So I need a motion. I need a, I need a motion to amend on the agenda, item four B. I mean, or B?
Right?
Right, yeah.
So who's going to make that motion?
Motion to amend the item to read the last line and require charter review every five years.
Thank you. And do I have a second on that? Mr. Goldstein seconds, all in favor of the agenda as, as amended? That looks like unanimous. Now we'll call a vote on item four B and the question to be put on the referendum. And I know we'll do a roll call vote on that.
That's as amended, correct?
Right, yeah, as amended.
Which was seconded, correct?
Yes. Mr. Goldstein seconded. Ms. Ro, Ms. Roundtree?
Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Mr. Camacho?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Nadelski Egner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Huberman?
Aye.
Ms. Revolus?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. McMur?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Ms. Shanahan?
I believe Mayor Ms. Shanahan had to drop the call. She said she.
Right, so the passes ten to nothing. Am I correct? Okay, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move item four dot C D E N F for approval as presented.
Do I have a second? Mr. Nadolski Eckner? Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Roundtree, if you'll please call the roll, a roll for call vote?
Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Mr. Camacho?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Nadolski Egner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Huberman?
Aye.
Ms. Revolus?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
And Ms. McMur?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Give yourselves a round of applause. Yes, Mr. Ray.
Yeah, I was holding my comments till we completed the entire vote because you never know what might happen.
Might happen.
But I'm glad we made it across the finish line. And I'd like to directly name the Charter Revision Commission for their outstanding work. Patsy Brusher, who was the chair, Richard McQuade, who was the vice chair, Paul Dickens, Tyler Fairburn, Angela Wasuna, Benito Watford Raleigh, Michael Weatherspoon, and our leader, our counselor, ours, what, what other term could we use? Attorney Steve Mednick for his outstanding counsel. I'd like to also thank the entire council. Because at some point or another throughout this entire process, all members of the council were involved. We did form a subcommittee to help us get across the finish line. Nor, council member Nora Nadelski-Eichner, council member Jen McMur, council member Ed Camacho, council member David Huberman, and council member Barbara Smith were all very instrumental in helping us get across the finish line to the point we're at now, where we're ready to present to the Norwalk residents the opportunity to vote on updating the charter, which will govern how we operate going forward. So I'd like to thank all those that have been involved. It's been a total team effort. And, and I'm just proud to be part of this team.
Thank you. I would like to also recognize that the Charter Commission members are here and ask Ms. Brusher if she'd like to make any comments? You have to unmute?
That.
Yep.
Yes, thank you very much. And thanks for all of the accolades that you bestowed on us. It's been a great honor for me to, to lead this effort with, with the Charter Revision Commission. And our, our goal was very seriously addressed to have the document reflect how we operate currently in the city. And I think we, we got it really well done, obviously, with, with the guidance of, of our councils, Steve Mednick, who has been amazing. It's only those of us who have spent all the evenings and, and reading the charter, I think I probably read it fifty times. So it's, it's pretty amazing. So now we have to present this and all of us get behind this effort and present it to the people of Norwalk and get it passed. I laugh when the mayor, always, he's told the story about Jenny Cave and her being the first woman mayor. And of course, I think he's probably forgotten that I ran against Jenny and she defeated me and won. So we had two women running for mayor in nineteen seventy-five, which was pretty, pretty unusual. So it just has given me great pleasure to help in any way that I have been able to do so. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Pressure. And again, thank you to all the members of the Charter Revision Commission that are here. I believe that brings us to Ms. Revolus.
Motion to adjourn.
I won't take a roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned at eight oh seven. Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Night.